Located at 27 Elm Archway, Falmouth.
Chairman, I have some notices to read for the record. This notice was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on April the 10th and April the 17th, and 13 mailings were -- notices were sent to Abutters by regular mail on April the 10th, 2012 as well for that.
Okay, for the applicant, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. My name is Stephen McKenzie and I represent William Fender. We're here before you for site plan review. This is a piece of property known as the Richardson House at 27 Elm Archway. On the other side of the street is the Elm Arch Inn, which is an old historic inn that was originally torn from Main Street in 1926. There was a dwelling that was built in 1952, a small dwelling here. Then in 1958, there was a building from an issue for addition to put additional rooms on as an annex for the inn. Elm Archway, by their way, background is a public way that was taken by the town in 1956, but is also on the municipal store. There are 20 parking spaces that exist out there right now, and as you can see, they actually go into the public way. What our proposal to do today is, we need to get approval for a site plan review, and we'll need a special permit under 240-3 from the zoning board of appeals, is to raise the existing Richardson House, which is an eight-room, 20 occupancy annex to the Elm Arch Inn, and replace it with two duplex condominiums. This is the site plan would look like. We're going to make some revisions, and I think we'll be coming back to see. We're going to have two three-bedroom condominiums and two two-bedroom condominiums, and we'll raise the existing structure. Our plan is to eliminate all the non-conformities that are out there on the property right now, including the setback of the existing Richardson House, which is 21 feet back from the road. All of our new buildings will meet the required setbacks of 25 feet. They'll meet all the site and we will exceed them. We're going to reduce the parking that's out there from 20 spaces, as I say, that go out into the road. Our plan is to reduce those to 10, create more green space out there, and get rid of those non-conformities. We're in an Aussie zoning district. The lot size is 18,736 square feet. At the time that the Richardson House had its addition built in 1958, as I say, it was through a building permit, the property was in a general residence district. In 1964, the town rezoned this area and a large area of the town from general residence to Aussie. So that was the governmental activity which resulted in the zoning change. We're required to produce eight parking spaces, but we're putting 10, so we'll have two additional parking spaces that'll be guest spaces for the units. We've designed them to be in smaller sections of two each, so that we don't violate 240-109C by putting them all together, and then we'd have more than five spaces that would back out onto the public way. As I said, we're removing all of the setback issues, and the only thing that would be left that would be any non-conformity at all would be the multifamily use. It's residential district, and we're changing it from an end to residential use, and so that would be conforming. The only non-conforming part would be the fact that it will be multifamily. But we feel that we're qualified under 240-3, and that this change is certainly less detrimental to the neighborhood in a residential district than the existing use of the inn. Drainage calculations were submitted with the application as well as landscaping. We did not do a traffic report because there's very little traffic coming from here. There's eight rooms right now. The inn has a year-round license, but it has been used seasonally over the past so many years. Based upon previous issues of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, a condominium unit produces 5.86 trips per day, so we're looking at roughly 23 trips coming out of the proposed four units. So it's very minimal traffic in downtown. And happy to answer any other questions. I'm making a very brief presentation tonight, and answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions, comments, at this point? Knowing that we'll see some revisions coming up.
Yeah.
I just want to comment from the staff, you know, if they had any input to put, or if we were waiting about the proposal. I mean, I know we had some, there were some questions that were in a memo that we had received.
Right, your staff report based on the plans in front of you, there'll be some changes. The board of appeals make sure there's standing on them. If there is, then we'll accelerate to the full. Until the changes come forward, until we get some standing issues, I think a brief presentation time is in order. Later, I'll just do the project, which is the site due.
And so, I just wanted to disclose that Mr. Fender and I do occasionally do business. He's an electric contractor, and we're not currently under any contract, and I don't have any involvement with this project. So, Mr. Curry said it seemed okay for me to proceed, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. So, I think we will, Nancy, did you want to say something to this, knowing that they're going to come back?
Yes. I have no idea when they're coming back. I don't have that date on my calendar, so I'm here now.
Okay.
So I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Was he saying that this structure, which is there now, was used in conjunction with the Elm Arch Inn? Is this an extension of the Elm Arch Inn, or is this a standalone property? I know that the Elm Arch Inn is for sale. I don't know who owns it currently. So I'm just wondering if this is totally separate from the Elm Arch Inn? And the other question, I would like to know, there's a historic district on Main Street, and I don't happen to know what the width of the historic district is there, and how far in from Main Street this property is, as far as the historic district is concerned. Madam Chairman, I don't know if you could...
I'm going to ask Steve to answer those questions.
And then I have one other question. On the zoning, what is the height permitted for a structure in here? That's perhaps through you, if you can tell me what that...
I don't know that it's any different from any place else, 35 feet.
Is it 35 feet?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And I would be interested in knowing how far in that is, and whether this has anything to do with the Elm Arch Inn property.
And Steve will answer those.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to. Good evening, Nancy. Very simply, the Elm Arch Inn is part of, the Richardson House is part of the Elm Arch Inn. Both properties are owned by Florence Richardson, her son Peter is here with us today. This is part of the Elm Arch Inn. It was the annex. The historic district is 150 feet back from Main Street, which comes to the end of the commercial property. So this property is out of the historic district. Let's take that, answer this question pretty quickly.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, then we will see you at...
Probably in two to four weeks.
Okay.
If the board of appeals hears this on the 10th of May?
17th of May.
Then we'll see you in about three weeks.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
So, we're moving on to our continuing discussion on wind energy and our policies. Now I have this in here. And I don't know whether you want to review this first part of it, Mr. Curry.
No, we discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and I handed out to you a couple of the fundamental questions, and I thought the board did a very nice job staying in policy land. I'll just reemphasize that again, I want you to think like planners during our conversation tonight, not like regulators. We'll get to the regulatory part. You'll find that the regulatory part will go much easier for you, smoother for you, once we get past the land use policy and bigger questions. So you had a discussion with regards to that, and Mr. Earl votes, no formal, but came out that you were looking at this as a land use, that you could see a populated landscape here, but under certain very limited circumstances, and with conditions, you wanted to see it more as an accessory use of the land. You wanted to see it a special permit, a heightened level of review through special permits, and you wanted it to be disaggregated in certain extent to certain sizes and certain districts and things like that. And you wanted to take into consideration the prudent avoidance, or the precautionary principle, with regards to the policies applied to this land use, and any regulatory scheme that you develop over the next month or two, or three, however long it takes. And so that's where we somewhat left off the conversation. And at that time, I indicated that one of the other very key elements would be a public participation component of it. But before we get to public participation, in that component, I think it's important to take a look at the first blush at this policy statement, more than anything else. Think of this as a more of a policy statement than program statements. Because public policy, the level of effort behind your public policy initiatives would be proportional to the impacts of the size, or whatever these machines you deem appropriate for other districts. If you have an industrial district that has a larger, you may want to have a greater outreach. If in fact, in certain districts you prohibit them, then no outreach is necessary, so. So I took the liberty of putting together this first draft, and you see that in front of you tonight. It's just a, it's a first draft, based on what policy guidance you gave me at your last meeting. So what we want to do is, and I go back to my original content, is still be in planning world, not regulatory world. Don't think about absolute numbers, should it be 100 megawatt, 100 feet, whatever it might be. Think more in those, you know, greater, lesser, larger, smaller, and I think that'll help us form a framework of this bylaw. And then we'll turn the wrenches, meaning Marley and I will turn the wrenches and plug in some numbers. So, let's just start off with looking at, and just to help you with a roadmap, everything starts with your policy, up here in policy world, planning world. We'll sort of put that in form here. When you're developing your bylaw, think of this roadmap. Our policies lead to our purposes. Policies, what do we want to do? And then the purpose is, why are we doing this? And as you work down through your bylaw, it would be, well, how are we going to do this? What will we do to get to the house? So right now, we're still up here in planning world, and, you know, why are we doing this? What do we want to see happen? Once you've answered those fundamental questions a bit further, and a great start, all the rest will come much easier. So take a look at the purpose that we've kind of drafted up for you here, and does it report with, you know, your policy? Take a look at it for the benefit of the public, if the purpose is to accommodate small wind energy systems as accessory uses of the land in appropriate locations, and these are value statements, it's okay, by providing standards for the placement, design, construction, monitoring, modification, and removal thereof, through a special permit process for wind energy systems based on the procedures, provisions, and requirements established here. What are we doing, and how are we going to do? So far so good?
Yeah.
So far so good. One of the other fundamental questions that we have here as we go through this exercise, isn't that policy, this purpose, then, we're going to get to some very important definitional criteria. And one of the criteria we had discussed at the last meeting was, what do we mean by accessory? There are two. And our bylaw today has, you know, building standards and land use standards. It's got to be 30% of the building, or half the lot area, blah, blah, blah. It really doesn't fit here. So one of the important things to talk, discuss tonight, and it'll lead to a public participation issue, is right now, under accessory, as an accessory use of the land, we've got in there, that means that no less than 100% of the electricity produced by the wind energy system shall be utilized by the principal uses located on the same line. No? Okay, sorry, we have to have a further discussion. So stop there and say yes, no, maybe? You're in charge, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, to call on your members.
It can't be done, because you can produce, you can't use all the electricity or energy you generate in one particular day.
Well, that was, can I?
Yeah.
That was something that, there's another spot in there that made me think, but I think what they meant, and this is what I want to try to clarify, is that building, that system, like in the winter, you may not use as much, and it could generate more, but in the summer, you need more heating and cooling, so you're burning far more. There was something that said going back can't be connected to the grid, but these have to be connected to the grid backwards, so that the meter can run back. Is that not correct, am I...
That is correct, but it will never happen if you're going to limit it to 100%, because they're going to downsize what they build, so they don't go over that rule. So I wonder why we...
Does 100% mean 100% any annual look, or 100% at the time, and that's what?
We'll go back into planning world, and that's a good question, as we get into the regulatory scheme, but as a policy, as a, to achieve your purpose of an accessory use of the land, then we need to further discuss that issue. So let's just say for the sake of argument, it's an annualized average. Or you simply lose that power, but it goes back to the purposes that you've expressed before, that you want these to be accessory, you want them to be relatively, you know, small, wind energy systems. So we have to really nail down what we want to be as accessory. And once we know that, then we'll know the level of public participation to integrate it.
This is a context...
You're not on the...
Doug is first.
So, why do we have to even determine the percentage of electricity?
Which I think, which goes back to my other earlier statement, let's just forget about a number, about, right now, we put a number in there. Let's just say that, look at it this way, all of it, the vast majority of it, the majority of it, you know, under average, don't think of a number. I think it should be, the overwhelming majority of the energy is used by the principal uses, or the majority, or an average. Look at it this way, forget about a number. And that way, we'll plug a number in, but is it your land use goal to have these use the majority of the power on site?
Accessory, accessory means that it is in support of something else. It is not the primary purpose. So, we already have that there, that when we say it shall not be the primary purpose of this to be selling back to the grid. But, selling back to the grid, if that is the most economic way of excess power that should from time to time, like Bob says, and Ken says, should might exceed what the normal demand is, is a plus. We don't want to regulate that out or define that out. So, if you want to say accessory, what does accessory mean in this context? Accessory means capacity that is reasonably related to producing the amount of energy that is needed by this facility at maximum capacity. And that's a question of fact, to be determined on a case-by-case basis. And when people come in with a proposal, they'll have an engineer that will calculate that for us, and then you go from there and you say, well, if they should sometimes not meet that full demand on their site, they can sell some of it back. That is both sound social policy and good regulatory policy.
Stay out of regulatory world.
Okay. But it's good social policy on a planning perspective.
There you go.
I guess, we do...
Go ahead, go ahead. You first.
I guess you have to ask, the reason for that, is it to restrict the size of the turbine, or is it to prevent profiteering?
Prevent profiteering.
So, if that, if there's a reason for that?
The land use reason is that, remember our discussion we had at our previous meeting, that typically an accessory use is something that's customarily incidental thereto.
Right.
And reasonable under the circumstances, as Rich states, my example was, you don't need a 500-car parking garage for your sandwich shop. So we need to know then, as a true accessory use of the land, what is reasonable and customarily associated with your business is okay, but that, that's a fact, that would be a fact-based inquiry for the regulatory board to do every single time they see one, subject to their interpretation, subject to the vagaries of regulatory, where you can set the policy here, and you can set the standard here, that the vast majority or must be utilized by the principal uses along those lines. So it's not a case-specific episode on the site.
Jim?
Well, I was thinking that because the energy needs vary so much during the year, that if, at some points, they could be, you know, 49% could be going off under the grid, you know, but it should never be designed to be handling more than the primary use. And that, you know, then I could still consider that to be an accessory. There may be a time when it's almost equal to, but, you know, in the peak periods, it would fall back to a much smaller number. But that way, there's a lot of benefits that could be accrued from it, without having mega plants all over the place, and still be reasonably sized to fit the needs of the primary use, is my thoughts.
Yeah, and this is exactly the kind of thought that I had in mind last week, too, that you have to have, you have to allow enough excess. First of all, it can be calculated, what a particular use will have, but we also know that businesses both expand and contract. And if you can potentially define it as accessory, as we've been saying, that it's for use of the primary occupier of that property, not to be sold elsewhere, but the overflow can go elsewhere, but you can also provide maybe a little bit more for potential expansion, and I don't know how that would fit in, so that there'd be a plus or minus calculation. Is that possible, Brian?
Okay, but I hear what you're saying.
Or maybe we don't want to do that. Maybe we just want to have, okay, this is the use here, we know for three years of experience what the electrical use is on that property, and so you want to put a turbine up to supply your electricity, and that's what it's going to be built towards, so it will be used on your property. Rich?
Two points quick, to get back to the example of the 500-car parking for the sandwich shop, well, that's absurd, but we also, equally absurd would be, well, we're only going to give them enough parking spaces to cover their minimum peak of demand, which is insane. So, you know, there'd be no purpose in having parking requirements at all in that situation. But to say that we're going to... I think an ad hoc, demand-based analysis by the permitting authority is fine. We don't have to predefine that, because there are going to be other factors that are going to address other concerns when we get there, such as height, and size, and setbacks, and things like that, which we will be regulating. So, they will have to be working within those things as well. So those factors that you might, well, just the factors, whether how much is being sold back to the grid, hey, what difference does that make? The more that gets sold back to, by the grid, by little places in Falmouth, the less we're paying for fuel.
Okay, but we're getting off here.
No, but on a policy level...
I liked your definition of accessory, the way you stated it, Rich.
Right, but on a policy level, the more that should be sold back to the grid, the less the oil company is going to be...
And we're not dealing with that right now.
Spending for oil, and that...
That's way beyond local.
But that's a policy concern that's very important to a lot of people, so.
So I still don't understand the reason why we want to set this limit. I mean, I get the concept of why, but I just don't agree with the idea of limiting the capacity. What if you have, like, Kuna Masek Farm might want to put one up, what if they have enough area and enough setback, and they want to put one in that produces two or three times the electricity that they use in a year, because they want another source of income, because it's hard to make it as a farmer? Why would we want to limit that? Or maybe we want to consider other areas, like agricultural land, with different rules? Because it just seems like that's prohibitive.
So let me interject. If it's your land use policy, that, you know, these are relatively, these are small wind energy systems to be accessory to principal uses, the profit center motive doesn't work. Then you need to go back and revisit your policy. But if your policy is that these are accessory uses to the principal use of the land, let's say it's AccuPlastics, or Associates of Cape Cod, they have a certain power demand. As accessory to Associates of Cape Cod, they want to have a little, they want a turbine to generate some power to help them through the heating and cooling system. to generate some power to help them through the heating and cooling system. Because whatever they do, they just pour the land. That's totally different than, gee whiz, you're in regulatory world again, well, we have enough setback, we have enough area, let them be a profit center doing something else, selling power back to a public utility. That's not what we talked about two weeks ago. Now do you get it? Don't be in regulatory world, don't worry about setbacks. You're setting the policy, the setback will flow from the policy, the policy doesn't flow from the setback. Kavish? So right now, it's an accessory use for the principal use on the land. If you want to revisit your thinking, that's fine, but I think you're heading before in the right direction. We'll start here, small accessory uses, do a special permit, but is primarily, or is incidental and relative thereto the principal uses. That's, do you see the connection now, guys?
As Doug suggested, and I don't disagree with him, that might well be something that, you don't have one policy, one size fits all for all zoning districts, or for all use districts, if you well might want to build in some flexibility for different districts, where that thing, that type of profit-making could be done, as long as, again, that's not the sole operation on the property, but it is an additional operation on the property. Now.
So totally different. So the profit center, right now, I'm an Associates of Cape Cod, or I'm Accurate Plastics, or I'm Coonamasic Farm, I want to generate some, I don't, I want to generate some power on my site for the principal uses that reside there. I'm not in the business of generating power back to you, based on what we discussed a couple of weeks ago. It may be that, in certain zoning districts where we have, you know, an accurate, an industrial-type use, that turbine might be somewhat larger. Because obviously, if I'm a smaller use, I'm an office building, a small office building, if I'm a smaller use that generates less of a power domain, my turbine is relatively proportional thereto, incidental thereto. So it might be in an industrial district, or a foundry or something, like that was here, but, you know, you're going to have a bigger turbine. And that's where those, that gets you threshold access, then you have to be at the performance stage. We're not in regulatory world, we're not in performance world. Up here, at this level, what is accessory? And once we know that, see what I'm saying, and all the other stuff will come out of that. We have to really make sure we're not talking about two principal uses on a piece of property.
That's the point.
That's the point.
That Brian just made, is two principal uses on one piece of property.
So if I'm.
That's why the term accessory is very important.
To borrow Doug's example, you have a farm, the principal use of a farm is a farm. Now, a farm is an area that produces a wide variety of different products. A farm might produce dairy products, it can produce eggs, it can produce vegetables, it can produce beef. We don't have any restriction on what can be produced, although it's very, very different products being produced. If a farm, in fact, we call these things wind farms, don't we? If a farm can, as part of its operation, because it needs to produce energy for itself to, you know, heat its, you know, barns and facilities, if it also can generate more that it can, that it can sell back to the grid, and again, if they can do it consistent with the interest of the area that they're in, within the zoning district they're in, and the neighborhood they're in, why wouldn't we want them to do that? That's the issue. As a policy concern, why wouldn't we want them to do that?
That's okay. The principal use is agriculture, it could be growing cranberries. I might then decide I want to grow some other sort of income-producing product, like soybeans, tobacco. My power demands for pumping water might be different than it might be for growing this other crop, there might be more. Well, you're going to have to go back and then maybe modify your special permit, and if your power isn't sufficient to meet your new demands. But it's still accessory to the product, to the production of, you know, a cash crop. It's not incidental to the production of a cash crop. Plus, oh, and by the way, in the winter months, I'm going to generate power and have a profit center unrelated to the principal uses. So it really comes down to, it's for me and my business, or is that?
And I think maybe a clearer way of defining this is, do we, as a policy, want to allow power plants versus accessory use? I think that, for me, defines it a little bit more clearly, because a power plant would be not an accessory use, it would be a second use on that property, and currently, under our zoning, we allow one use on a piece of property. So I think that makes it a little clearer as to what.
You have one principal use in certain districts. You can only have one single dwelling in, in residence districts, I think. But you're on the right track.
So if you split it that way, I think it might be a little.
We need to have two separate ones, one for industrial.
If we want to allow power plants, and I, I almost think, in my mind, it says a lot more when I use the term "power plant" rather than "industrial-sized."
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to look at it as, as power plants, we're not really farming the wind, we're making power with these things. So, I mean, a wind farm's a nice term, but they're generating power. And these great big things are power plants. And I think, you know, there's a, I think that when we talk about accessory, was to keep the scale from being utility size, and that's why we started going in that direction. We have to wrestle with this language.
Doug.
And maybe there's another way to define the principal use. To me, staying with that farm example, they're really only working, you know, half the year at most. They're doing other things in preparation for the season, but their busy time where they're really probably using a lot of electricity is probably only half the year. So if we limit them to use somewhere in the range of their total electricity, they're going to use excessively small unit, which just seems like a futile effort, it seems like they should be allowed to.
You can look at their peak usage, I think, and I think that's what we'd have to look at, not, I know we use the term averaging, but in an instance, depending upon how the usage is, and these are going into details here, but we can then define what we're really looking at when we go into details, to make things possible that we're envisioning. Because right now, my mind says accessory versus power plant, as I said.
Yeah, I don't like the term "power plant" either, that's scary. But I just wonder if we're being too narrow with our definition of accessory.
No, I think if we're, we're looking at accessory and power plant, I just lost my train of thought. I was looking at Richard and.
[laughing].
But one thing I did want to say, one thing I did want to say, though, is, I did miss, I was not here for that meeting, but I did watch it on TV, and I did forward some notes to the office, and I asked Ralph to distribute them, I'm not sure. And one thing that's great about watching it on TV is you can interrupt at any time. I can say what you want at any point. But I did, I'll come up with it, I did lose my train of thought.
Rich.
So another factor to this, okay, so you have a farm, and you grow a certain range of crops on the farm in season. Now, if we have, if I own a farm out in Hatchville someplace, and I'm growing crops, what is there, and I obviously want to sell these crops, what is there in the zoning bylaw that now also stops me from processing that product? Basically, cooking it and putting it up in jars, the old-fashioned way, selling it as Ma's Old Fashioned canned stew tomatoes.
Oh, you're retail, right?
No, I'm selling wholesale. I'm not selling retail, I'm selling wholesale. I'm not selling this to the market, so I'm growing it and I'm processing it. But I'm only doing this in a, not in any industrial-sized setting, I'm doing it on just the basis of what I'm growing.
Like an accessory use?
There's any number of scenarios out there.
Right.
I think, and we can bring in a fresh horse and a new mallet, but I think you really need to focus not so much on those and what might happen and what is, but do you want these to service the principal uses on the land? Now, those principal uses might change. Associates of Cape Cod might triple in size, or they may have a new production of Accurate Plastics that requires more power. When they come back and they see, but the fundamental question is, an accessory use of the land uses the vast majority or the majority for all the power for the principal uses, whatever they may be, at the time they are in front of them, I remember.
It just occurred to me.
It came back.
Yeah, it came back. But when Doug was talking about what someone would need for their power requirements, if you are going to a company, and I'm doing this with solar panels right now, they will come out and they figure out what your usage would be, and what size system that you would need. So I would think that would be something that we wouldn't even have to worry about, because that's something that the consumer would take care of, and they would size whatever machine or whatever to their uses. So I think somebody putting something in that is going to overproduce for them really is a non-issue.
Jim.
Well, I think why I like the thought process is, one, you've got to remember, we're saying this has to be done in the form of a special permit. And so when we're saying this, we're defining, you know, how people will come into the special permit, and having it be accessory, it gives the chance for the neighbors to come in and keep it so it fits in the neighborhood and not be overwhelming and dominating, you know, and that's why the language is there. Now, if somebody has a use and their needs go up, just like any other special permit, they want to modify it, they've got to come back and there's another hearing. And they justify it, the neighbors all get their way in again, and they all decide if this is a good thing for the neighborhood. I mean, that's where I was coming from on it, why it should be in there. I'm not so sure the number, I'd like to see the ability to sell back to the grid and, you know.
A little bit.
A little bit, or never exceed the peak, I don't know what the number is, but it can never absolutely exceed the peak of the onsite use, because then it's, then by default, it's a primary use. We have to work on that, and I'm not going to say we should go with any numbers yet.
Right.
But those are my thoughts.
Yeah, I feel comfortable going with accessory, and probably the vast majority. I think that would cover.
Yeah.
You know, so we're way up there, like, oh, maybe 80%, at least, because the other thing we have to understand is that they do not make turbines to meet your exact, you know, so there's going to be some slop somehow, and they're not going to choose it to go under, so it's going to be a little bit of slop over, probably.
Semantics here, I disagree with the term "vast majority," that the economically significant majority would be a better, more precise term, and would definitely get us out of epic-scale productions.
That's why we've got a lawyer on the board.
I just wanted to comment, I read through this, and I believe, like other people have said, the percentage is whatever the number is, but I definitely believe that as a policy, making the policy, that that should be the majority of all the power produced should be in there in the policy, which will also limit, like Jim said, who's going to come for whoever ends up being the board for the special permit, it's going to make their job more directed. You won't have, like, somebody coming in with a few acres and wanting to put a wind one, because they have the setbacks or whatever. The policy, that's, in just an open spot, that's, I think the policy can be a controlling factor that we want, because right now, we don't have any policy to create somebody wanting to make a profit.
Do you want to take over now?
No.
[laughing].
Doug.
I apologize.
So these things really make a lot of electricity, and I think that we're going to probably, we're going to probably preclude hardly any of them from even being built, other than for a business that's using a lot of electricity. And so if that's our goal, then I guess that's fine. But I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, they produce a lot more electricity than an average home or business can use. So we should think about our policy and decide, do we want to just say, we don't really want wind turbines in Falmouth, because of our past experience? Because that may be what we're saying if we determine that it's only going to be this accessory use, and all the electricity be used on site. I'm not sure if we're aware of that, and I think that's probably an accurate statement.
Well, I am going to throw something out in regard to what you just stated, too, because that is the option, and we've made that clear from the start. We can simply say, no more in Falmouth. We, I don't know whether you all recognize this or not, but we do have eight turbines here in Falmouth, four of the larger variety, and 10 of the 10-kilowatt, and that is more than any other town on the Cape has. So I don't know whether you want to put that into your consciousness as we're thinking about this or not, but I thought I, you gave the entrance to that, so I figured I'd fill it a little bit.
Just one more wrench to throw into this whole machine here, is, you'll be thinking about the concept of perhaps a cluster development, using one turbine that would be of suitable size for the area, that would serve more than one particular lot, but people like, let's say, in the industrial park, where you get three or four people together, they would, businesses together, they would decide on one location, and they would all be able to use the power. And therefore, that would balance out the demand on it, perhaps lessen the need to be selling back, and at the same time, make it more economical for everybody. It's a possibility.
All right, so what I'm hearing is that, you know, the economically, the economically significant portion of the power to store, which is synonymous with vast majority, right now for onsite uses, whether they're for a principal use, or uses, or a combination thereof, it's proportional to their demand, from here, from board. Having got that then, that's going to make your public policy, or public participation a little more easy for you. So if they're going to be that level of accessory, and then residential zones, they're going to have to be fairly small. So your outreach efforts will probably have to be proportional to that. If in other districts where they might be allowed, for high-energy demand folks, then that public outreach effort is going to be proportional to that, too. In other words, if in fact we have an industrial zone, then you might have a larger turbine in, then your public outreach effort is going to have to be proportional to that, I would say. So it sounds as though you need to have a little bit of a discussion about whether or not you think that's the way to go, or you want one size fits all. You know, are we just going to have a broad outreach, no matter what it is, or do you want it proportional to that accessory, to the accessory? Because from that flow, the procedural part of this, so again, back up here, policy, just thinking policy, think like planners, not zoning.
Comments on that, on the public outreach?
I think we have to do a lot of public outreach, no matter where we're talking about putting these, I don't really see the difference. I see that as being an extensive part of the process. Maybe we have to look at, because these things are a little bit different than the casual of butter, where we just do 300 feet, that if they're doing it, maybe we have another definition of a butter, you know, because they do have an impact of a lot more than that. So we might have to think about a much broader outreach if someone is looking for a special permit for it, and then defining the. And then defining the people that get the notification. I think that's what you're talking about, the outreach, notifying of butters. I think we might have to go a little bit more than 300 feet.
Hopefully you brought your original outline, you know. Should there be more rigorous public outreach, how would that process work and what's the desired outcome? Think of those policy questions. And your comments perfectly, you know. But do we want that same level of effort? If that's your policy, we'll make it separate.
Has anyone reached Todd Gonzalez's column in the Cape Cod Times today? He was expressing concern about this whole concept of visual of butters. That, you know, people whose properties weren't directly impacted by something, but they could see something like a wind turbine or something. I think we want to steer away from that.
Oyster farms.
No, that's a policy that handcuffs everybody. But I think we don't want, we do want to talk about health effects and real risks of entry, but.
We can't. That's outside.
No, 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 I mean, but when the town regulates them as a community, we want to talk about that. But when we're just talking about visual concerns, I think maybe we want to not be so concerned about that. You know, it's, that gets us into a whole lot of antagonists when somebody comes in and they just don't like it. And why don't they like it? Well, because I can see it. So when we're sticking with the usual standard issue of a butter being within a certain number of feet, that's, that's valid, but, yeah, Jim is.
The reason why I brought it up is we have a 35 foot height limit and, you know, 300 feet, those all go together. And when you're talking something that's a lot higher, I think it has to be defined differently. I'm not, you know, I just think there's a lot of difference between the 35 foot height limit. I would not want to see 50 foot buildings put in every district in a farm.
But 50 foot buildings that are as wide and as high are very different from.
But we have a limit of 35 feet for a reason.
But there's a difference between a tower and a building, and there's a significant difference. A building blocks light and air. A tower does not. Now, a tower may have other negative health effects that the Board of Health should be addressing, but that's different.
My point, it's more significant. And I think we have to reach out further, that's all I would say.
Okay, my comment is that because of the experiences we've had already, even with some of the smaller ones, because we're dealing with a different type of animal here in zoning, if you will. And the effects are far, are more far reaching. I do believe we should reach out further. I'm not going to talk numbers now because we're not supposed to. I think our policy is that we look towards the well-being through planning of our community. To be able to do that, we have to respond to what is considered to potentially be a detriment in a neighborhood. And so I do believe we have to, without defining the outreach, I think we do have to have a more extensive outreach than we have in the past for effects in a neighborhood. Bob?
I, the first thing I think is do no harm. That's the reason I think that we want this to happen. But I wrestle with not, I believe in renewable energy and I don't want to disincentivize that either. And I think if, you don't want to just outright ban them. We could make something so restrictive that no other wind turbine could go in Falmouth, and I don't think that's right either. And I really wrestle with that because of the do no harm aspect of what our ultimate intention is.
That's a hard one.
Yeah, yeah.
Rich?
I have a friend who's in the solar business. And he was telling me about how in some places there have been objections to solar farms by a butters because they could see them. Now, and for sure you're going to have the same thing coming up with wind towers, wind turbines, and more such objectives, the wider out you have the public comments or the public objection. So it's, it's a question that, do you want to effectively ban things or do you want to make reasonable accommodations? That's where you have to find the golden mean.
I will throw out here, though, that just because we're accepting a wider band of public comment, we are listening. We are doing a courtesy to the public. That doesn't always mean that our decision follows what we are hearing, because we hear many different things. I'm simply saying I think we need to throw it out for something like this to a wider circle. And without defining how big wider is. Doug?
Maybe the, the distance of the radius of impact would be determined by the proposed height of any proposed structure.
That's similar to what Jim was saying.
Right, proportionate.
A 35 foot building is not like a 400 foot tower.
Right.
Kenny, you have your hand up, yes?
Well, I was just wondering if, I was kind of like, thinking this was different, what Brian was actually looking at, meaning under policy, do we want to include more of the policy for building this or is it for the participation of the permitting process? That's, okay, so we kind of like, I think are off a little bit here.
I have to let you go.
Okay. So that's what I was thinking he was talking about. He was talking about how do we want the people in the audience to come into this? And I was listening, I was like, oh, maybe I missed it. But, so I think that what he said about the accessory use, if most of it is, the power is going to be used on property, that is going to probably allow us not to need as much public input because it's going to be more restrictive for the people that they know that nobody can put a 400 foot tower next to their residential neighborhood and just generate power to sell back to the grid. So that's, that's what I think he was talking about, so.
I'll see how it. You missed your calling.
That's why I'm going out of the military.
That's absolutely correct. But you know, sometimes you go, you talk it out, you come full circle and reach your conclusion. And that Jim hinted at that, but it's a function of the height, of how accessory it is truly. But what I'm hearing, though, is that, and you're on target too, you know, with that circumference, that there it has to be, or you're looking at some sort of enhanced outreach level of effort. This is a matter of public policy. And that enhanced level of effort should be somewhat proportional to the application. No sense in going overboard on a 300 watt family compound turbine. As opposed to say someone who might be putting a 100, 660s. I think your policy basically, though, is you want an enhanced level of public participation proportional to the accessory use. Is that what you think?
Rob?
Yeah. Sorry, I was late. I was working. It seems to me, I agree with that, but I also think that we need to remember that when the permitting group holds a hearing, you may have notified a certain radius of people about the proposed wind turbine. But we never exclude the general public. So our outreach really is, needs to be considered not only to the general public and whoever wants to speak, also, and not just limited to those that are notified by certified men. So I mean, to me, you know, the outreach is an open-ended thing. However, we don't want to blindside anybody by not letting at least a certain number of people in the proximity of this to be notified.
Rich?
Yeah, well, I would expect that anybody, when we have a public hearing, anybody can come in and say, you know, that's understood, that's a given. My concern here is about who has standing. And what, if we're notifying somebody, is that conferring standing upon them in terms of potential lawsuits and, you know, other kinds of delaying tactics, appeals? That's what the real concern is to me on this outreach issue. So that's why I think we want to go careful on that. Everybody can come in and talk to us. We're not going to, you know, turn anyone away that has something to say at a hearing, but how much, you know, how much ability do we want to turn over to others to take us to court over an issue? Of a property right issue?
I think as Brian phrased it, it's a very good way, that the outreach is proportional to the accessory.
To the accessory use. And remember, the regulatory world, when you've got a standing and rebuttable presumption of a person agreed. The general policy is that you would like to have some sort of enhanced outreach, whether it's the general public that has no standing. I'll make sure it's clear to me too, that your general policy is that you want to have an enhanced outreach for parties that might have a rebuttable presumption of standing. In other words, that that circle that goes out, right now, it's the a butter, the a butter to the a butter. And under this circumstance, we would reach out a little bit further to that supposed impact population in addition to any other general public considerations you want to take in. So I just want to make sure that your public policy, that we're going to, we're going to increase the enhanced level of parties of interest.
And you want to know that, you heard that, you want to know that for sure by saying, yes, that's our understanding?
Yes, that was my point.
Yeah, that was Jim's.
Right. Does anybody disagree with the way in which Brian stated this? That we will have an enhanced level of notification? Okay.
I have reservations about that.
And I think Brian understood the basis of your reservations.
Remember, I'll regress a little bit into regulatory world. There are, up to a judge to determine if you're standing. If it was a case of plaintiff, someone put a cell tower or a phone, it's a thousand feet away, a judge gives a standing. Don't worry about it. The rebuttable presumption is up to the judge. Back into the planning world.
Let me just, let me just make one more point about that. I would be, as a personal injury lawyer, I would be the last one to die, anyone standing who can document physical illness from generating something a half a mile away, two miles away. If they can document physical illness, they have standing, as far as I'm a judge. But to give somebody standing to sue and prevent something because they can see it? Because it affects their property values, because they can see it from their eyes?
We weren't talking about that.
That, to me, is a different issue.
But you're, as a board, a public board, you want this enhanced outreach effort beyond the floor set by 40. That's okay, it's all you have to do. So I decide, we'll plug in the numbers, meaning Marley.
Sorry.
We'll plug in some numbers for you and bring you back the example. Just as we go for the accessory, I'll change that a little bit. I'll use the board's policy or some sort of economic, the economics based on economic. So it might be that, different types of land uses. That's the litmus test or the threshold test they have to come in with, that is economically substantial. That's the test. Does that sound like a good test? Or is it?
Whatever. As long as it makes sense. As long as it makes sense.
I believe that will try to make sense.
Okay, now is a good time to throw out, we're going to go back and forth on this a lot too. And it will change as we go back and forth.
Remember, as I said right at the beginning, it's iterative. It might be that, you've set your policies, you've set your purposes of why we're doing this. We're going to get into the how we're going to do it. And then where we're going to do it. That's the sequence of events. And if you have your outline, you'll see it then. And each step, believe it or not, you're getting through the hardest parts, thinking like planners. And the regulatory stuff, you plan is actually a little more easy. Right now, accessory use of the land, through an enhanced regulatory effort with an enhanced public outreach.
Doug?
I think we need to go back and reexamine our policy on the strictly accessory. Because for business, I'm thinking of some of these contractor bays. For instance, out in the tech park where, you know, we store our equipment and our tools and everything. But 90% of the time, we're off building a house somewhere or, you know, it's little time that we're actually in the shop using electricity. But as a business investment, say the owner of the property wanted to invest in a wind turbine, I just think it's bad policy for us to say, you can only design this little puny thing that's only going to be used on site. So I'd like to reintroduce the concept of the, if it has to be called a primary use, maybe that, I don't know why we can't have an accessory use that produces more electricity than is used on site. So I'm still not happy with that policy.
Brian?
You wanted to say something.
That's where we are right now. Based on what you know today, the literature you've read, the past experiences we've learned, that's where we are today. Now, it might be that in the future, as we learn more, as our experience grows, as our knowledge base increases, we can revisit that question. I think the board is heading in the right direction at this point, and I do bring a very good point though. Let's head in that direction, this direction for now, knowing in the background that, you know, this, we're not going to walk off a monorail out with this in front of town meeting, and it's never going to change. It's always, it will always be able to be bought. It might be that, as our knowledge base increases, our experience is broadened, we can come back and say, okay, based on what we know today, and the experiences we have, on this level of effort, in this area, we want to, we may want to revisit our policy and allow Florida to be a principal. But right now, based on your prudent avoidance and your precautionary principles, we're starting small and grow big. Let's give it more than two weeks before we go back and revisit, is my advice.
I also think as we fill in the details, we will see that maybe certain exceptions should be put in too along the way. Yeah, Bob?
To answer Doug's concerns, on the back page, wind energy systems allowed with limitations. We might be able to work something into that.
That's kind of where he's mentioning, okay. Rich?
Yeah, to test Doug's concern, I mean, what would prevent us from simply sending a little questionnaire out to contractors and people in the industrial park? Simply asking them, explaining to them what our concern is and what their ideas would be. So that we would get a better picture without, you know, waiting for people to come in. Asking people to come in and give us an idea of what that would be. And then we'd make our decision based upon what that would look like. Having some realistic.
That's getting more into definition at this point. That's getting more into definition at this point. It's chopped smaller than where we are right now, I think.
Yeah, but right now, what we're trying to do is to try to determine a policy of, do we want to, A, limit this strictly to very narrowly defined accessory use, or as Doug's been saying, do we want to widen this to allow this to become an equal, in some areas, which will most likely be in industrial park or contractor areas, to become another principal use? Now, how do we decide that question out of nothing, and how is that concern going to change, that decision's going to change, unless we get some kind of idea of what would that look like specifically? What would that be likely to look at, like? We could send a questionnaire out, or Doug could maybe talk with some people, if he knows some people that might be interested, and have them come talk with us, just to see, without having us commit ahead of time to doing it, just, just say, well, this is a question we're having, and we really would need your input to see how we would want to go on it.
Well, a contractor yard is on one piece of property, so we're already right there with a principal use on one piece of property, or an accessory use on one piece of property. And it could be accessory to the contractor's yard with all of the units there. So, that wouldn't prohibit it, I think. Brian shaking his head, nope, sure wouldn't.
Remember, you're going to go through a hearing process. When you're discussing this amongst yourselves at this point in time, thank you for permitting me to speak to you, I guess that's what they do. There will come a time when we vet this out and go through a hearing process prior to town meeting. So, at that point, everyone will be able to come in and see you at the same time, express an opinion, and you'll hear it all together, instead of letting this group come in and talk about that. So, I know you're, I'm glad, I'm glad I don't have to push you out there, folks. I'm glad I had, kind of, hold you back a little bit. Actually, I'm going to do this, and I'll, again. So, we're, we're getting there. I know this sounds, it's a little tedious starting now, but you're going to get some momentum going here, because, as I stated before, the hardest part of this is up here in planning, and you're doing a very nice job of thinking as planners of this. And I know it's hard to get back to regulatory world, but we've got accessory use of the land, and we've got that out, what we mean by accessory, we're going to find, and we want, that's what we're regulating, how we're going to regulate it through an enhanced level of scrutiny, through a special permit and enhanced level of public participation. And as you can see from the outline, you're filling in the blanks, and as you progress, it's going to get a bit more...
Ken, you wanted to say something?
Brian kind of touched on a lot of what I was going to say, but I think as this board, the writing the public policy that we need to put forth is not taking into consideration any type of specialized businesses or whatever. It is actually the protection of, and creating a policy that the thirty thousand people in the town can assure that things that have happened in the past won't happen. And I think with this rough draft and going forward, that's starting the basis of that policy.
Anybody else? Okay. Brian, did you want to go on further tonight on this outline?
No, this is, this is what we put together for you so far. Your agenda, I had to digress a little bit to accessories, and now I did get to the agenda item a little bit. I don't think we're on the case that much, but we'll work on this some more, and get it out to you, and you'll be seeing a lot of this, so, but I will expect you, and you just got this yesterday or two days ago?
Yesterday.
We'll have a much more in-depth, you know, that the purpose fits your policy, and what you're, in what you're, in what you're regulating fits your purpose, you know what I'm saying? Then your applicability, exceptions, your wind turbines prohibited, your limitations, procedures, it'll all, it's going to start to really come in fast, and figures are going to tell us to slow down.
Okay. Did you want to set us up for what you want us to discuss next time? Is it the major topic under five, or what?
Probably, we're going to start getting, we're going to start getting into the impact analysis, and we're going to start really getting into the, this is what you want prohibited and what's, we're still figuring out what's, you know, this is what we're regulating, this is what we're allowing, we're now allowing, and this is, and this is what we're thinking about with regards to what might be able to go forward as an accessory use. And then we're getting to application requirements, procedure reviews, and all of those things. So, really, what you see here tonight, start digesting.
Okay, so start digesting this that we've just gone over tonight?
Does it fit our policy? Fit our purpose? What we want to regulate and how we want to...
So, we aren't going to go further tonight, then, because we could take up, let's see...
And it's not on your agenda. I specifically want to just get the big policy question of, what level of public participation you want, and I've got that now. You'll start getting into the many criteria, what you're, what you want to do now, based on your discussion from last week.
Okay.
Okay? And so, that will be on the agenda. Okay? Because, right, it almost meant, that's good, we're on track. So, you'll be meeting...
Is that election day?
No.
No, fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. You'll have, you'll have time to take a peek at this.
Okay, great.
You're, you're almost out of planning world. You're almost out. You're getting into regulatory world. You've still got further to go.
So, moving on, on our agenda then, correspondence. I don't have a folder here. Is there any correspondence? Is there any correspondence tonight? Okay. We have committee reports.
I'll go first.
Go ahead.
Community Preservation Committee is working with the town to move the Spring Barzro Road project forward. Town meeting voted not to allow a $400,000 expenditure for the sewer hookup at this point. So, we are revising our request for proposal on Spring Barzro development. We have also received some applications from individuals asked, looking for grants under the Falmouth Affordable Housing, Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust, which was approved by town meeting, two town meetings ago. So, there are people out there looking for the CPC to recommend to the selectmen that certain grants be made to move these affordable housing projects forward. Just as a reminder, the reason the Falmouth Affordable Housing Trust was established was that, what we did there was to put a large sum of money into a trust that would not require going back to town meeting every time we had an application. Instead, the application comes to the Community Preservation Committee, we make a recommendation to the selectmen, and the selectmen then approve, or disapprove, or change, or whatever money that goes towards affordable housing in, in this particular way. It was done to take advantage of the fact that the real estate market is changing all the time, and that to have to go back to, to town meeting every time you wanted to approve a grant for a project, it was just, it was too time-consuming and too onerous. So, town meeting agreed with us on that, and so this is the newest way in which developers can come to the CPC and ask for grants for affordable housing. And I think that's it for now.
Okay. Okay, local comprehensive plan, you all got the energy and the water and wastewater segments of it to look at, think about, and comment on. And the, our group has not met further on that. We will in a few weeks' time, because right now, we are focusing on the economic sustainability portion of it, and you may recall that that is a subcommittee composed of two selectmen, two members of the EDIC, and two members from our board. And we met last Wednesday with the Woods Hole Research Group, and tomorrow, we're meeting at MBL, and the week following, we're meeting with the Oceanographic to gain input from the scientific community portion of it. And I think it's fair to say, I'm going to ask, Jim was at the Woods Hole Research, but I think it is fair to say that there is a disconnect as to anything that the town can do to enhance their growth viability or anything like that, that they are a fairly self-contained group. But this is a huge thing, that it impressed me that the amenities that Falmouth affords them is a great attractant to getting people here. They don't hire anybody under a master's level, and they are very specific. That's why I said there's nothing much we can do as a town, educationally or anything else, to enhance their capabilities. When they try to recruit people here, they absolutely love our bicycle path, our trails for hiking, the shore, of course, the freshwater ponds, the art scene, the main street with all of its restaurants, the, gosh, what am I missing here? The libraries.
The road races.
Yeah.
You know, they're very athletic, they're recruiting young people that like to participate in a lot of the events we have, so we're doing a lot of the right things.
The live theater.
Pardon?
The live theater.
Yes.
Got a show starting this week?
Yeah. But we have things going on in this town that are amazing, if you pulled it all together as to being an attractive town to pull people here. Now, that being said, a lot of their young people come here as a stepping stone. They love Woods Hole on their resumes, and there's nothing that we're going to be able to do to change that either. Some do stay. They do not particularly have a problem with housing. For their short timers, the two to three weeks, or two to three month people, they have agreements worked out with various places in town that they can stay. And they also indicated that housing is kind of handed off, one to another. It's just, you know, like the old college scene, they, they just hand it off to the next group. So, have I covered everything pretty much as a summary of what we were finding out? So, I think we can be extremely proud of what the various groups in this town have done to enhance the town as a wonderful place to live.
We're still not retaining the younger people.
No, we are not.
And that's what we need to look at, is...
Absolutely.
How do we, how do we keep them?
They have no problem at the Woods Hole Group with our educational systems here. They think they're great.
Yeah.
But they didn't feel that they were professionally isolated here either. It's just that it is a stepping stone.
Yeah.
So, that's our report, unless either one of you wish to add something?
No, I have a report on another committee.
Aha, okay.
Actually, you have prepared something. Very quickly, pass that down. It's got some good information, there's two pages to look at. This is the Affordable Housing Subcommittee that I had the pleasure to, to work on, and we had a particular goal. We were focusing on the town-owned lot on the corner of Key Cricket Highway and St. Mark's. Marlene coordinated all the meetings, and everything was posted publicly. We had committee members of Ann Ostroff and Kibaly Khan from the Affordable Housing Committee, and I represent the planning board. We met on February second, I mean, February sixth to twenty ninth. We had a site visit on March fourteenth, and we had an outreach meeting on the twenty eighth. Then we met again on April sixth to kind of just put, put things together. We had, the outreach meeting was good, we had a lot of public comment, and in that, we, we didn't really write the RFP, but we, we put some guidelines together for the RFP, and that's what I put here. We wanted, we want to incorporate, the neighborhood has got a school bus stop that's kind of evolved on the property, that's been there for a long time. We're going to make sure that that stays as part of the design, that whoever develops it, that's going to be in our criteria. We want to limit the curb cuts that are going to happen in that neighborhood. We actually just like to have one, because we just feel that it would really change the, the neighborhood to have multiple curb cuts. We also want to limit the amount of zoning waivers. We're really looking for a developer that can come in under forty B and try to fit as much into our existing zonies as he can without looking for all kinds of waivers. So, that's the guidance we're giving the bidders, that we, we will give favor to the ones that aren't looking for, you know, all kinds of changes. We're looking for family housing, we're looking for ownership, where we wanted the design to accommodate three units. We really took the, like, the single-family, this is, this is currently a single-family lot, and, and the car zoning, and so we, we thought that three would do it. And actually, the houses that were there, the pre-exist zoning, are, they, there's three of them on the same size lot, you'll go across the street. So, we took a look at the roof lines in the neighborhood, the windows in the neighborhood, and we're trying to give some guidance to the developer, we really wanted to, to fit the neighborhood, and the neighbors liked that idea. You know, we're looking for one and a half story properties as opposed to two and a half story things, because that's, that's what's in the neighborhood. We're looking for the windows to match the neighborhood. In essence, we want to drive down the street and not know it's, it looks like it's been there all the time, and that's what we're trying to accomplish. We, we also met with the town wastewater superintendent. This is one of the primary areas where the sewers are going to go in, so we're not going to require the developer to put in a D-Nite system. However, we want to make sure that when they design it, they have a sewer hookup to minimize the impact when the sewer does come down the street, that they're, that that's been taken into the design. We want to give preferences to the power efficiency, that, you know, we want to see as, as great of, the lowest cost of operating cost we can possibly have there with, but let the developer decide that, and we're not going to tell them, we're just going to take a look at, that's what we have. Richard, when I finish, you can comment, I've got a couple more things to go, and then, then I'll listen. And then, we also want to look at the, not necessarily make them all handicapped accessible, but the, the idea of visibility, of visitability, which means a handicapped person can come in and visit and stay. So, we're not going to put in handicap ramps, but we don't want houses with four steps in front of them, we want thirty-six inch wide doors so someone could come in. So, it, it makes it more accommodating, but not, not making a hundred, a handicapped accessible, more a visibility, a visitability aspect. And then the only other thing I wanted to go over, which was kind of surprising for me, there's new income, there's another handout here in the second page, and I just wanted to share this with everybody, because I thought the numbers were pretty high. These are the definitions of what affordable income is right now, based on the current eighty percent of the Barnstable County's income for a one-person home, eighty percent limit is forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars qualifies as, for affordable. For two people in the house, it's fifty-two. For a three-person home, it's fifty-eight, and for four, it's sixty-five. So, these are really houses we're building for people that work here in Falmouth. I mean, I mean, I, I think, I was kind of somewhat taken back about what affordable is right now, but that's, those are the income levels, and so someone that makes, a single person that's never owned a home before, well, within the last two years, I believe, is, is the requirement, that makes forty-five thousand dollars a year could qualify to buy a hundred and fifty, roughly, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home on St. Mark's Street. There'll be, there'll be a waiting list for those people, but I thought that was quite amazing, those numbers. When, the last time I built some affordable housing, it was thirty-six or thirty-seven, so it's grown quite a bit. And, wow, it seems funny that while the economy seems to go down, and incomes seem less, this number's actually grown, so I don't know how they, we must have a lot of well-employed people here. But anyways, that's my report, I just wanted to share it. And I think the next step is actually for our committee to disband, because we've finished our recommendations and handed it off to the Affordable Housing Committee, and they're taking over from here.
Rich?
Depending on the avail-
Depending on the availability of grants, would shared wind generation systems for, on a community level, make sense for affordable housing? Is that something we should...
Not in the scope of this project. We're looking at the public land on Key Cricket Highway, Richard, it never came up.
No, okay, but in general, okay. This particular property, all right.
This is limited to this, this was to one town parcel of land, very limited scope, how to deal with it, get public outreach, and set it up. We didn't take a look at the bigger picture, I think, focused on the...
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion.